Here. Hello, everybody. My name is Joe Lanin and welcome to today's Southwest Zone Town Hall Meeting. Today's topic is going to be the Texas athletes going to play college water polo. Alright, so I do know that this is a big topic for a lot of people that have their athletes playing in college or athletes just kind of wondering about the different steps and it is quite unique. It's not, it's not just unique to our sport, but it's also unique to kids coming from Texas to go play water polo in college. It's a whole lot different for us, yeah, than it is a kid in Southern California or Northern California. So, um, so I'm gonna go over the basics. If everybody looks over to the chat, I put in some links over there. One is just, it's a college packet that I've been using for a long time. There's, there's a link to that with a ton of information. There's another one is a slideshow that it's a, it's a path to college that I used on my little town hall meetings that I went around the state last year. We also have a sample college resume and also the college corner is a link that has, that lists all of the coaches and their emails and phone numbers that is on the USA Water Polo website. So, um, I'm gonna share my screen real quick. I'm not gonna do this for the whole time, but I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. So how can you find this stuff? It's not that hard if you want to. What you're gonna have to do, sorry, can you see my screen? Can you see the, uh, thank you? So what we have here, this is the TX Water Polo website. So we have a lot of good information here at the TX Water Polo website. Here's the homepage in this, everything that is linked over there on, in the chat is also on this, on this page. If you go to education, you hover over it, then you click on growth. And then you go down to the growth page and then you click on college water polo. Okay, and then you just scroll down a little bit. We have the college packet. So what does the college packet look like? It's just a PDF and you can just scroll down and there's a ton of very good kind of info. And this is what we're basically gonna be going over today. Also on here that I'm gonna just kind of show you real quick is sample college resume. Okay, again, this is just a sample. It comes in all shapes and sizes, but this is the basic kind of, kind of in, yeah, information. So now also we have Path to College Water Polo. This is just a Google slideshow here. This is again, just something that I used over the, like, over time. It's, it's gone, it's gone through many variations with John Abdo, yeah, to me, to a few other, like, a few kind of others. It has a lot of very good info on it as well. So, and then if, then we can also click here and go down to college corner. So if you go to the college corner, what this basically is here, you have a directory for all the women's teams and all the men's teams here. It's just, all you have to do is click on it and it has all this, the coach's name, their phone number and email address. It's very, very easy. So that is essentially, um, so again, just go to the TX Water Polo. Like you hover over the education, then you click on growth and you click on college water polo and it'll take you to all of this info. It's, it is easy as that to, yeah, you gotta find it online. So what are we gonna do today? So what we're gonna do is just go over the basics. I'm, I'm gonna highlight of like a few of the things that are on those things or that are on those links, but please ask questions along the way. Again, I just don't wanna sit here and talk to a screen. So y'all can please, please, uh, please either ask via the chat, who I have Ally Hill from Long, from Longhorn Aquatics and also Coach Water Polo at the University of the Pacific is monitoring like the chat feature for me and will ask questions and she might be able to answer your question. Like also, if you want to just ask it verbally, please just simply just unmute yourself and ask and I, and then we can have a little discussion. But, um, first thing is first, I'm Joe Lanahan. I work with USA Water Polo for Texas Development. I've coached for 25 plus years now, including I coached NCAA Water Polo for five seasons on the East Coast before I moved to Houston back in 2003. Water Polo is a very small world. There's not a whole lot of opportunities to play NCAA varsity water polo. But, um, it's one of those things where all the coaches kind of know each other. I've kind of, I've kind of kept in touch with a ton of coaches and I've gotten to know a lot more as I have probably over the last 15 years. I've sent about 125 plus kids to go play NCAA water polo somewhere. Alright, so, um, there are some steps that I encourage everybody to take and that's what we're gonna talk about today. We're also, yeah, we're also gonna talk and just, I'm just gonna educate everyone about some, some little subtle type, uh, kind of, uh, kind of data and facts for along the way. Please just let me know if you have any questions or any, any more specific questions there. It does go into detail on those, on those links that we have in the chat feature. Alright, the first things first, playing water polo in college is a privilege. Okay, it's not just something that everybody just has a right to because you're a first team All-State or you're a starter on your high school water polo team. You have to earn it. You have to be proactive and then you have to start and they have to stay proactive and you have to start now. Right? Give yourself an opportunity. Give yourself as many options to kind of, kind of choose from, kind of when the time comes. Right? First and foremost, do not pick a college based off of, solely based off of water polo. Okay, a lot of people will do that and that is a common mistake and then, and that, and then athlete's gonna go there. They don't like the school. They don't like the city and then they're gonna come home after a season or a year. So again, you, like academics are number one and I'm gonna mention this a couple of different times. You need to find your best fit academically, financially and athletically. What's, yeah, what's gonna work for you and there, and kind of, kind of what works for a kind of player A is not gonna work for player B. And that's the biggest thing is find the best fit, find the best fit. For those athletes that are kind of listening, mom and dad can help. They can help with this process. They should be helping with this process. Mom and dad, they should not be doing the process for the athlete because if mom and dad kind of, kind of steps in and does everything for them, the athlete is not gonna be invested in the option or the overall decision. So, but they can definitely help and mom and dad, just encourage them, encourage them and try to just make sure that they are doing the steps that they, that they need to do. Don't push it because again, they're gonna have to be the driving factor. Your coach can also help. You're, yeah, like your local club coach, your local high school coach. College coaches are gonna be, are gonna be contacting, yeah, like your local club and your local high school coach. You gotta let the coaches know and keep them informed along the way about these are the schools that I'm looking at. Here is my water polo resume. Again, we're gonna talk about this stuff as we go. And please make sure that, that, yeah, that you keep your coach informed and, and update them as you go. The coach can also turn and like, and many coaches do, yeah, they will be contacting the coaches for you as well on your behalf. Alright, don't expect a coach to only do that, but like you, but the mom, dad and coaches can help. This is not an athlete all out there on their own. Okay, so it's one of those things, this is gonna be a team effort for, yeah, yeah, for everybody to find the best fit because water polo is a lifelong sport, everybody. It is a lifelong sport. It's not like football. It's not, it's not like the higher kind of the impact sports out there. It is going to be a lifelong sport. So an athlete can play from the Dare to Dream 12 and unders all the way up to JOs in high school. Yeah, just kind of find a place to go play in college and then play masters and play it's at the 65 and plus world masters kind of eventually. So this is a great sport to play and playing water polo in college is that gateway to keep playing for the rest of your life. And this is, and obviously this is something if people are logged on here and they are interested in possibly playing kind of, kind of college water polo, this is a sport that is important to them. So this is a sport that I hope that everybody's going to enjoy for the rest of their lives as well. Alright, the first thing people ask me all the time are, what are the options to play college water polo? So what are the options to play college water polo? Alright, the options to play college water polo, there are three major options that we're gonna talk about. Just, yeah, kind of just real quick. The first one is collegiate club water polo. That is, um, that is water polo that is going to be at probably like about 200 plus colleges, you know, from coast to coast. It is, um, these are programs that are normally run through the Department of Recreational Sports. They are coach, they are player-led programs. They're not coach-led programs. These are not NCAA or varsity. But there are club teams at the college level all around the country, including in Texas. There is a Texas division of the CWP, the Collegiate Water Polo Association. There are, there are programs at Tech, at A&amp;M, at UT, at Rice, at the University of Houston, at Baylor. So there's a ton of programs kind of out there where athletes can continue to play water polo in college. Alright, and it is great opportunities for athletes that do choose to go that route to have a like, a leadership stake. That is what I did. I played, I swam at the varsity level at Texas A&amp;M and I played collegiate club water polo and I got the opportunity to be a player coach my freshman year. I actually organized a trip to go cross-country as an 18-year-old. And that was something that probably benefited me kind of down the line as a more, as a more professional coach. So there's opportunities out there, um, at the collegiate club level. So if a varsity option kind of does not work, there are a ton of opportunities at the collegiate club level. There's also, a lot of people don't know that there are a probably about 30 to 45 schools out in California that have junior college water polo, that have junior college water polo. And what that means, those are two-year schools. It's, 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 it's very similar to here in Texas where the athletes, um, where the athletes kind of go to school, you know, for two years and then they'll transfer to a four-year school. Like here in, yeah, in Texas, you're gonna have, like, there's the opportunity to play football and baseball and basketball at the, at the junior college level. They have that same opportunity out in California. It is a less expensive option. Right? They still get to play varsity and high-level water polo. But it's something that the coach cannot contact you first. You have to go contact the coach first. So for the collegiate, uh, for, for the community colleges, you have to contact, yeah, that coach first. There's a number in Southern California. There's another in Northern California at that same college corner that I had linked. There's a whole list of, of the junior colleges that play out in California as well. Okay, so what we're gonna talk about more today is gonna be a varsity water polo at a four-year school, at a four-year school. Alright, there is, there is something called the NAIA, which is a small little NCAA-type, uh, type institution that has a couple different schools that play varsity men's and women's water polo. But we're gonna primarily talk about NCAA water polo. That's, that is the big thing that has the NCAA basketball tournament, like all the college football teams. 95% of the schools that play varsity water polo at the, at the four-year level play NCAA water polo. That includes the, um, like Austin College up in Sherman, Texas. That is the first school that, yeah, that's the first NCAA program that played in Texas since the 1970s. Actually, there used to be a varsity program at UT and Texas A&amp;M back in the 70s. That got dropped back in the early 80s, but then Austin College started a couple of seasons ago. So that is a very good option up in, up in Sherman, Texas, and that's probably, we are hoping to have a lot more options kind of like that as we go forward here over the next couple of years. So again, that is what we're talking about today. Alright, so everybody asked, so that's just some basic, the four major ways to play water polo in college. Okay, now kind of getting started. Okay. What I tell every athlete that I've had go play NCAA water polo, you have to do two things. One, you have to put together a college resume or a water polo resume and I'm just gonna show everybody that kind of real quick. This is the only time I'm, this is the last time I'm gonna share my screen, everybody. Promise. So this is a, this is a sample of a, of a resume. Alright, there's a lot of shapes and sizes. You know this, but, uh, but mainly put the name, your contact, kind of, kind of info, your objective, your academic kind of, kind of information. You can choose to put a picture or not. And then your athletic profile, the way that I always have suggested people break it down, is in, is in the high school club, then your kind of zone team or, or the, or the ODP team. And one thing that I kind of break it down into different years. So you know, your freshman year starts, you know, September and then it'll be done after the Junior Olympics at the end of the summer. So, um, I would start with your freshman year and younger, especially for those athletes that played, you know, at the, at the 10 and under and the 12 and under level. Show the coach how much that you've been playing. Break it down and show all the different tournaments that, yeah, that, that you played a long time ago. Because what you're doing here is you're showing the coach, this is how much water polo that I'm playing. You're, you are trying to make yourself different than the other athletes out there. So, and what does that mean? You're, you're trying to, to kind of separate yourself from, from the kid in, in Southern California that might play high school water polo and a little bit of club water polo. So if he plays high school water polo and a little bit of club water polo, he might play, you know, 50 games a year. Here, a kid that goes and plays at all these different tournaments, we have a ton of events in Texas. Take advantage of the opportunities. So we have a ton of events in Texas. This shows that a kid's been playing 150 games a year. Not to be much more attractive to the, to, to a college coach. So again, then you break it down and put all the positive stuff in here, all the positive stuff. Okay, from, you know, I've made the all-reaching team or I made honorable mention All-State to every single event that you played. Don't put, you put, don't put in there that you got last place, but you put in, but you put in there that you played in it. From a local league to tournaments to everything, show them that you play. Then as far as your kind of academics, the first two questions that any college coach is gonna ask anybody is, how are your grades and what's your SAT score? Because what that tells them is, can I get them into school and how much academic money can I get somebody? So those are the first two things that a coach is going to want to know. But you also want to put all, like, all of your extra, extracurricular, your AP classes, your volunteer stuff. This is just a sample. This is just a sample, but I would, I would keep this to one page and make it simple. This is showing the coach that you care. You're putting the time and effort into, uh, kind of, kind of putting a resume together. You're sending it out to coaches. It's showing them that you care. It's showing them that you care and that this is something that you want to do in college. Right? And you're doing their work for them. You are answering a lot of the questions and so therefore then they can get to know you once you start communicating back and forth. That is the biggest thing right here. Let them know kind of who you are and you do the work and you have to be proactive, proactive, proactive. And I'm gonna say that word over and over and over again. Alright, so that is, so that is the water polo resume. So that is gonna be for anybody that is, that is getting sorry, that is part one of what you, of kind of, kind of what you have to do. Part two, uh, part two is you have to pick your top 10 to 15 schools. Okay? Alright, you don't have to decide kind of what they are, but you have to go and kind of use that list that I kind of, that I, that I put up there earlier as far as the, like, the list of men's schools, the list of women's schools and you have to put together a list and you have to go do some research. And what I mean by that is look into the school. Does it have what your athlete or, or, or if an athlete is on the call, kind of what the athlete is looking to do. Alright, because you don't want to be a math science person and then going to a liberal arts school. Okay, or like, or vice versa. Because again, academics are the most important aspect here. Academics are, are the most important part now. I vote, I always have a, I always have a couple of questions that I ask the athletes. Alright, and I'm gonna go ahead and, and ask everyone here and then I'm gonna answer because it's just an opportunity, you know, whenever I talk to athletes, I ask them the question to give them some extra information. The first thing is, I always ask them, what's, so what's the school size? A lot of people want a small school. A lot of people want a large school. Alright, here's the thing. I would say keep your options open. Okay? Yes, I understand about the benefits of a small school. I understand about the benefits of a, of a large school. You can make a large school seem like a small school or, or you can make a small school seem like a large school. It's gonna be up to you. Again, keep your options open. Keep your options open. The next question, um, like I ask is public or private? A lot of people look at me and parents kind of tend to ask, well, I think a public school. I understand that. The primary reason that a lot of people answer that way is they think public schools are less expensive. Okay, there's only one varsity program in Texas right now. That is at Austin College and that is a private school. So any public school that's gonna be offering a water polo is going to be out of state. So if an athlete goes to that school, they may have to pay out-of-state tuition. Plus, a lot of times the public schools, they do not have as much money to give as far as, 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 as far as athletic or, or I'm sorry, as far as academic aid or financial aid. So what does that mean? Private schools have a ton more money to give, a ton more money to give. Alright, I've had kids that have gone anywhere on the East Coast and everywhere on the, on, on, on the West Coast. Again, you have to find what's gonna match, that's gonna work academically, um, financially and athletically. The big thing is the financial piece, okay? They, private schools have a ton more money to give for academics. They have a ton more money to give for financial aid. That's one thing that people don't necessarily take into context. Like there's a school, I'm gonna use the school called Iona on, on the East Coast. Yeah, my, yeah, my wife went to school there. I've had a kind of a ton of kids that have gone to school there. They probably have about 90% of their, of their student body on financial aid somehow. So that's not the case at most public schools. So don't discount a private school because of the price tag, because of the initial price tag. That can go down, especially if an athlete has good grades, especially if, if an athlete is gonna, yeah, is gonna qualify for financial aid and/or athletic scholarship. So that, so that right there is that. The next question I ask is East Coast, West Coast or Texas? You know, and a lot of people already have it in their head that I wanna go play East Coast or I wanna go to West Coast. A lot of people answer, I'm gonna go to West Coast because that is California and I wanna be outside the whole time. Alright, that's great and all for like a week during JOs, but doing that all the time, that's a lot of sunscreen. That's a lot different than what you have here in Texas. There's not a whole lot of people that play outside water polo all the time. That's not necessarily a good reason to pick a school either. Again, academics, academics, academics. So, um, there's, a lot of people don't understand that there's great opportunities to play on the East Coast as well. There are all the Ivy, like there's three kind of Ivies. There are two service academies that play NCAA water polo. Plus, there's a growing number of teams that are gonna be playing here in Texas, including Austin College, which is a great school here locally. Alright, so again, just keep your options open. Think a little bit bigger. Alright, the next, yeah, like, you know, the next question I ask the athletes is, uh, Division One, Division Two or Division Three? A lot of times the athletes will say, oh, I only wanna play Division One, or they're scared to go play Division One. Okay, and this is where it really kind of differs between water polo and a lot of other sports. And what I mean by that is this, is water polo, like in football, basketball and baseball, uh, Division One teams only play Division One. Division Two teams only play Division Two. Yeah, Division Three teams only play. They, they do not, they do not mix it up, uh, like, you know, very much. In water polo, everybody plays everybody else. There is one NCAA championship for men and there's one NCAA championship for women. There might be Division One, Division Two and Division Three teams all in the same conference playing each other on a regular basis. And in water polo, there are a ton of Division Three teams that, that can compete with most of the Division One teams. There are, there is something called the Big Four in water polo. You have Stanford, Cal, UCLA, Stanford, Cal and, and, yeah, in UCLA and Stanford and, uh, or USC, I mean. Those four schools kind of are the top schools kind of out there and they're good every year. But there's a ton of schools that are competitive with every other, yeah, Division One team out there every single year. So I would highly recommend that nobody just say, I'm scared to go play Division One. Because there's plenty of Division Two and Division Three teams that can beat a, like, a significant portion of the Division One schools. Also, don't be afraid to go play Division Three because they don't have any athletic money. Because Division One tends to be the athletic, the like, yeah, like the bigger schools, the bigger athletic departments. And then Division Two and then, okay, I'm sorry, Division One can also give the most athletic scholarships kind of available. Yeah, Division Two tends to be smaller schools, like a little bit smaller athletic scholarships and they can give a little bit less scholarship. And then Division Three tends to be smaller schools, a lot of private schools, and they can give no athletic scholarship money. Now, I say that in women's water polo, I think there's eight and a half scholarships available. In men's water polo, there's four and a half scholarships kind of available and a lot of current, uh, water polo Division One schools, they don't give the full allotment of athletic scholarships. They will give partial scholarships to everybody. Alright, we're gonna talk about scholarships in a little bit. Okay? But it's one of those things where don't be afraid because like, all, like, all the Ivy Leagues are all Division One ath- athletic departments. They don't have any athletic money whatsoever. Okay? Again, there's plenty of very strong Division Three schools that play at a very high level that an athlete can get a ton of financial aid, a ton of academic aid and have a great water polo experience as well. So again, I would just not discount Division One, Division Two, Division Three. Okay? Alright, so that's my, that's my main reason, yeah, for asking that. And then I'm gonna ask probably, what is probably the most important question? I always ask them kind of A, B, C or D. And what I mean by that is this, your playing situation. What type of playing situation does an athlete want to get into whenever they go and play? Alright. Um, do they want to do A? A is they're gonna go be part of the solution. They're to go play and they're going to, uh, and they're gonna start there, yeah, and then they're gonna start their first year. They're gonna be a starter. It's gonna be just like high school all over again. B, they're, they're gonna be, um, they're, they may not play a whole lot their freshman year, but they're part of the, of the travel team. They're definitely gonna play a whole lot from their sophomore year on. C team is, alright, well, they don't play a whole lot and they may not travel, yeah, that much their freshman sophomore year, but they're gonna play and be on the team there, like their junior, senior year. Then D, D is basically they might play their senior year. Alright, so that's a wide range of options as, yeah, as, as far as the playing situation is concerned. But it's a very important situation. Alright, I have asked, I have asked kind of athletes that, there are some athletes that want a CD school. Alright, they wanna be challenged and they wanna go have to earn their spot there. There's other athletes that wanna play their freshman year. And the reason I asked that question to the, uh, like, like the athletes and, and the parents are, because if you want a CD school, that's going to eliminate some AB schools kind of, kind of from your top 10, top 15 schools. Or if you want an AB school, that's not eliminate a lot of different schools from your top 10 as, as far as the CD schools. So everybody has to have an idea about kind of where they're going. And you can talk to your, uh, kind of coach, you can get to know the college coach and ask them some certain question to have an idea about where you would sit going into college. So I know I used to, to kind of, kind of talk to my athletes and they, and I used to go, okay, this is an A school, this is a B school, this is a D school. You told me that, that, you know, you wanted to play your freshman or sophomore year. Why do you have this D school on, 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 on your list? And that was a good, that was a good reason for them to take it off. So again, playing situation is very important. You're gonna have to ask your local coach. You also have to kind of get to know the, um, like, like the college coach and have an idea about what your real situation is. Because just because you're state MVP in Texas, that doesn't mean that you're gonna go out and every school's gonna be an AB school. Alright, there's certain schools that are, that, that you're gonna have to go fight for your right to play. So any questions so far? I know I've kind of gone on a little bit and I haven't had very many questions yet. Again, please, if you have any questions, please go ahead and unmute yourself and ask away or just ask in the chat feature. Just ask in the chat feature. Alright, again, once you're done with your resume and once you're done with your list of top 10, top 15 schools and really doing your research and thinking about those questions that, that we just asked, then you're gonna have a list of schools. And then you have to go get the contact info for the coach and then you have to send out your, like, just, all you need to do is send an email to all the coaches with your water polo resume, a very simple email, a paragraph long. Hi, I'm Joe Lanahan. I'm from such and such club and I play for, for such and such high school. I am very interested in your school. Attaches my water polo resume. I look for, yeah, to hearing from you. And the good thing about the water polo resume is after, after, uh, after your next tournament, you can update your water polo resume and have a reason to email that coach again. Again, you have to be proactive. You have to send this email. You cannot wait for the coaches to contact you. You have to go out there and sell yourself out there. You have to go out there and sell yourself. Alright? There is a place for everybody to play college water polo. There is. You just again, have to find, uh, like, the best fit academically, financially and athletically. Okay, so again, kind of, kind of what you're done with the resume and your list of schools and there might be, as you go through this, you might add or subtract kind of from the list, but eventually you're hopefully gonna get down to a list of about four or five schools at the beginning of your senior year. You're gonna go on some recruiting trips. And then you'll get down to a list of kind of two or three schools and then you get to make a choice. And, but like the earlier that you start, the more choices that you're gonna have down the road. So, again, any questions?
Yeah, Joe in the chat, Meg asked which
Yeah, Joe in the chat, Meg asked which A, B, C, D school is the best fit if you want to be challenged but also want to play a lot?
Um, I'm not, I I don't know because Meg, I just don't know what your level of play is right now. This is so an A, B, C, D, that's gonna be different for every single athlete. So. I might have two girls that are both, you know, lefty drivers on my water pole team and an A school kind of might be like. An A school for one player is gonna be a C school for the other player. It really depends on what your current kind of level of play is. All right, so um. Um, so that's what I really suggest you do is um. Go out there and get in, yeah, just yeah, just talk to your teams that have gone off and played water pole kind of in college, start looking at the schools and start putting the kind of get, yeah, like your list. But if you want to play. There are great division three schools on the west coast down in the AI, kind of kind of down in i- in the skyack. There's some, there's some very good division one, division two, and division three schools on the east coast, both in the CWPA, the MAC for girls. So there's plenty of schools in Austin, uh, yeah. A- and also Austin College, but to be challenged, you're gonna get challenged anywhere you go. It's gonna be a much different environment for any athlete going from Texas for high school club. Yeah, to college. That is, that is a big thing. It's going to be harder, okay? It like the coach is gonna be different than like your high school and yeah, and club coach. You have to be prepared for that. I I tell people, I, I always have a chip the size of Texas on on my shoulder. I always do and and I always will. You have to prepare and you have to play and you have to be prepared to go in there and prove to everyone on that team. That a kid from Texas, yeah, can play waterfall. But you are gonna have to challenge yourself and then you're also gonna have to step up to the plate as well.
Um, the next question was, Joe, what are the best ways for Texas athlete to get to know college coaches? We know about emails, videos, summer camps, J O's, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, um, like the biggest, like, like, the biggest thing is, you know, you have to encourage your local uh, coach, your club coach, your high school coach to also kind of. On your behalf, kind of contact the like, like the college coaches. Um. Emails, calls, texts, you know, most athletes, you can call the coach as much as you want. They just can't call you until after a certain date and that and that's depending on each school has a couple of different rules. For and for 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 the NCAA rules, but get out there and play as much as you possibly can. You can go play the like at the at the at the O D P tournaments. That's not, that's not listed there. Go be part of the O D P program, get to go play in Utah. There are college coaches there. There are gonna be college coaches at the O D P national championships. The biggest thing is play as much as you possibly can and send emails over and over again. It's not just one email. It's not just one email and then hope somebody calls you back. Okay, because a lot of people think it's just one email. I have, I tell all my athletes, you understand, you have to sit there and email. A lot of these colleges. They only have one coach for for two teams. They, yeah, they might have some grad assistants. But they don't have a large staff. It's not like football or basketball where they are gonna just scour the country and recruit and find everybody. You have to be your bone, you'd like to get like your best advocate out there. You have to go find the opportunity and yeah. An email and don't think that you're gonna be bothering the coach. No, you're doing their job for them. Go out there and email if like, if uh, if you don't hear back, email again. Just say, hey, attach to my updated water pole resume, I, I, after we just got done playing at J O's. Kind of where we played in the gold medal match in the gold division. Okay, don't be afraid to keep emailing and until they contact you. Once, but and once a coach contacts you, then you don't have to sit there and yeah, and send them an email every week. But then the coach is gonna then start contacting you um, as far as um. As far as um, on a, on a regular basis, so. Hopefully that that answered your question, so.
Um, and we got one other question. I see some new schools adding water polo such as Milliken. Can you expand on the benefits of playing for a new program?
Benefits of playing of ki- kind of playing for new program. It's gonna be an opportunity to play a lot quickly. Okay, um, it's gonna be an uh, like. An op- uh, uh, an opportunity to be part of a program as it builds. Okay, because if you go to an A school, um. And you're gonna, yeah, or if you go to school and it's a school for an athlete, the odds are that for an athlete coming from Texas and it's gonna be a program where to where they're going to be. A starter the first year and be a like a program changer, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a rebuilding program. So a new school is gonna be like an A or B school. Um. And you're gonna get to know the coach kind of real well because they want as many athletes there as possible. Okay, so um, there, I like the opportunities are great, like I'm gonna use Austin College because that is a fairly new program. They had what nineteen boys that freshman year, nineteen boys, and all of them got to play. All of them got to travel. And all of them had a great experience. They only had what ten total girls? And that girls team went and got second placed on like on the east coast. So the opportunities are are gonna be there for a lot, a lot more playing time, a little bit more help as far as kind of getting in schools. A little bit more help as far as the financial aid side of things as well. So hopefully that that answered the question. Any more schools before I keep going? Or any more questions, yes? All right, so a lot of people kind of have some questions as far as the NCAA structure. A lot of people don't quite know, just I'm just gonna give some, some kind of facts, kind of a- a- along the way right now. NCAA men play in the fall season. NCAA women play in the spring season, okay? The overall structure of the seasons, it's actually kind of similar to what, you know, ki- kind of people do here. Where they play the first half of the season, they play a lot of of tournaments. They play kind of the weekly non-district, non-conference games and then. Once they get into championship season, that is when they're gonna play a lot of the of their district and conference games. And then there is a conference championship and then the conference champion tends to get to qualify for the NCAA championship. That's on both the men's and the women's season. The men's pretty much play between August, they start practicing in August. And their NCAA championship is the first weekend of December. The women's start uh, practicing and playing the middle of January. Their ends and their NCAA championship is, yeah, is normally Mother's Day weekend, the second weekend of May. All right, um. There are a ton of conferences. I'm not gonna go over all the conferences. That is, that is in the links that I have at the beginning of the chat. Um, and plus the conferences change almost on a yearly basis. Um, there are, but essentially there are eight teams that get to play in the men's NCAA championship and eight teams that get to play in the women's NCAA championship. There are some playing games. It used to be where they get to play to like, like the different places, but now it's a single elimination format. Um, but there are a ton of conferences, both on the east coast, the west coast, also in the Midwest. Um, again, there are division one, division two, and division three teams in most of the conferences. There are a couple of conferences that are only division one schools or only division three schools though. So um, that's basically the basic ends, yeah, that like the NCAA structure. There's a, there's a few more details in the packets. And the links that we shared kind of earlier. Um. But the benefits. A lot of people don't know what the benefits of of like, of like playing an NCAA sport are. Um, and I'm just gonna break it down kind of real quick. Um, I am a big believer, the opportunity, yeah, to play NCAA varsity water pole is great for all the athletes. Um, it is, and yeah, it's, it's an opportunity. You don't want to sit there and say, what if? Now, um, again, it's only if you find a very good fit academically, athletically, and financially. But you know, a few of the benefits that are really kind of neat are early registration. A lot of people don't understand this. The athletes get to register before the like the greater uh, student body. That it dead, that is gonna be something that, you know, you get the register, yeah, kind of before the uh, like the seniors. So kind of what does that mean? You, athletes get to have the pick of the litter as far as the classes are concerned. Because the like, the coaches want the athletes, yeah, to be able to be at practice, so they don't want them to have to be at this one lab. That's gonna be in the middle of of their practice twice a week. So so this gives the athletes the opportunity, yeah, to get the classes that are gonna fit around their schedules. A couple of kind of kind of overthings is, yeah, is normally for every athletic department. They're gonna have some form of academic oversight. Okay, and what does that mean? Is there might be a person or a group of people uh, within that. Athletic department that they are gonna be doing progress reports. They're gonna be doing, uh, they're gonna be providing tutors. They're gonna be giving the coach every a little bit of information to see how that athlete is doing in school. I know whenever I I I was a varsity athlete, they would come to our classes and take attendance to make sure the kids, yeah, were in school. Now, I I was a swimmer and NCAA swimmer, um, but they weren't necessarily. Uh, like they checked for me, but they weren't, but they were more checking for the football players that were in these uh, class. But um, but that's, and they will report back, yeah, the, yeah, the coach. The reason they do that is they want the athletes to stay eligible. They want to give every, like, all the athletes the full benefit of the doubt to give them as much opportunities and as many tools as possible to succeed. Academically, because it is hard to do both school and of varsity sport in college. Good. The next thing is up is a professional coach. Everybody out there, like, you have professional coaches, okay? This is a little bit different. So a lot of like, a a lot of the club coaches, this is their second job. Um, a lot of the high school coaches, they also teach as well as coach. They also coach swimming and maybe even club as well. In college, it is going to be, the coach's job is to coach those, you know, kind of the like, the like, the fifty, the like, the fifteen to twenty men and or women. That is their job, all right? That is their job to look after them. That is gonna be their surrogate parent uh, away from mom and dad. That's gonna be a conduit to where the like, if. Uh, mom and dad are not getting in, yeah, just in touch with their little Johnny, that they can kind of contact the coach, go, oh, what's up with little Johnny going on right now? Um, it is, you can't, you can't necessarily kind of put a price tag. Those coaches, they want you to do well. They have a vested kind of interest if they allow you to be on their team. They have a vested interest in your success, both in the pool and out of the pool. Okay, and that is, and they only have about twenty, thirty athletes. That's it. Okay, um. Now, another thing is the sports kind of kind of medicine staff, like, like the athletic trainers, this, this is not gonna be. A- a- available to the other, like, the other students that are going to the school. This is like a place where athletes, yeah, can go if they're sick, if they get hurt in the pool or out of the pool. Um, this is a place to where they can go get the best uh, medical help as quickly as possible on campus. That's not really. A- 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 available very easily to the other students. Um, strength training. So right now, I know a lot of coaches give their athletes a lot of strength training. Or at least they may have no strength training going on whatsoever. So what does that mean? That means that there might be a person that works in the strength and conditioning department out like of the athletic department that is gonna be assigned to the water pole team. And the, and their main goal and the debt and their main job is to work with that coach. To develop an in-season program, you know, for weights, an off-season program, yeah, for weights, to give, yeah, to give stuff to the athletes. Uh, when they go home for the summer. This is what we expect you to do. All right, and that is, that is something that, you know, a lot of people don't have currently right now. Especially whenever people go to college, they're gonna be, uh, they're gonna be past the like, they're gonna be stopped growing. So this is a great time to add weight and to also just get stronger and faster in the water. And again, that's why they do this. This is going to help them in the water. That's gonna help the team. So a- another thing, a lot of times, you know, right now, either school or um, or or for club. You know, you have a lot of fees to pay. There are monthly fees, you know, for clubs. You have to, you you have to pay to play for um, like your high school. In college. Most of that stuff is taken care of. There is an athletic budget for most NCAA water pole programs, all right? And that means that kids are gonna get per diem on trips. That mean that the trip costs are taken care of. That means that the trip travel is gonna be kind of taken care of. That means that they're like, athletes are gonna get apparel from, from uh, t-shirts to shorts, to workout shorts, to suits, to goggles. So a lot of those kind of like, like the small costs that are incurred in water pole, that's taken care of in college. You know, and that's, and that's, uh, and that's a huge kind of burden off the parents. Now, don't get me wrong, in college, there, yeah, like. There might be some quote unquote fundraising going on for a team that goes from the east coast, yeah, the west coast or the west coast, yeah, the east coast, that's gonna be minimal. So, but but for the most part, that stuff is taken care of. You are treated like every other student athlete there, so at that school. Um, a big thing, and you really can't put a price tag on this, um. An athlete is gonna play NCAA water pole somewhere, they're gonna have a group of instant friends. Okay? These don't need to be your lifelong friends, but they end up being your lifelong friends and it's um. And it's gonna be something to where um, you're gonna get to know these kids and like, you know, it's gonna be um. The older kids can kind of help you, okay, this is the best place to live. This is the best place to study. This is the best place to meet boys or girls. There's the whole social aspect kind of it as well. Um, and you really can't put a pressure. Now, that doesn't mean that athletes can't make. Other friends through o- other activities, but it's a nice little, it's nice knowing that you're gonna go to a school and then you have an instant group of friends there. All right, and coaches, NCAA coaches are gonna be able to help an athlete to some extent to get into school. Okay, um, I know whenever I was an NCAA athlete, the first group of people that I met. Um, I had on my team, I had one kid that played high school water pole in my team on my first year there. I got there in July, this started in August. And I had to learn how to recruit and I had to learn how to get kids into school as quickly as possible. And most coaches, they all are doing the same exact thing. So, um, and what that means is I got to know, this is the uh, this is the uh, kind of the admissions process. I got to know the admissions people and there is normally gonna be somebody that works. For the athle- athletic department, that's gonna work in admissions and. E- even if you're just simply flagged as an athlete, that can, that can, that can help your application get through the process a whole lot quicker. Okay, and sometimes a coach is gonna, yeah, is gonna be able to have certain slots. Like they're, they're gonna be able to, as long as a kid meets them, like the minimum criteria for a school, they're gonna be able to get him into school. That might only be one or two slots a year or or even just, you know, one or two slots every other year. All right, so it's kind of one of those things where the coaches can help. But they can help a lot more than even if they just don't give you a slot, but they can help by ki- kind of pushing your application through the process, going and talking kind of to admissions. Everybody has their own process, right? But coaches know how to work the system. Coaches also know how to work the system. In the financial aid on campus, the academic scholarships on campus. Okay, so that's a like, so they know that little room on campus to where the like, like, the like, the financial aid. I think I said it earlier. The first two things that a coach is gonna ask you about are, uh, what are your grades and what's your S A T score? So what that does is it tells them, how much financial aid can I get this kid? Can I get him into school? All right, because every, because every athlete, you know, whenever you come to a school, you're not gonna. It's not gonna be a like a hundred percent, you know, full ride athletic scholarship. That doesn't exist in water pole. It just doesn't. Because there's eight and a half uh, women's water pole scholarships. There's only four and a half men and most teams have twenty to thirty athletes. So they're gonna be split up into partial scholarships a lot, all right? Uh, books, which we have, yeah, which might only be about a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship, oh, like, over a forty thousand dollar tuition. So what most coaches are going to do is they're gonna work on a package for all the athletes. And a package is gonna be, how much money can I get for academics? How much money can I get for the financial aid? And then if they need to, they might throw in a little bit of. Athletics, because the coach is not only gonna get to know the athlete, but they're also gonna get to know the parents. And they're in there at some point along the way, they're gonna ask, all right. What can, so what do I do? So what is the, wh- what can you afford to pay to have your son or daughter come here? Might be twenty thousand dollars. So if that's the case, well, um, then I can get ten thousand or. Um, athle- or academic scholarship, I can get a ki- kind of five thousand dollar of the financial aid. I can get, then I can throw in a couple thousand dollars of the athletic money. That can get me down to the twenty thousand dollar kind of, kind of minimal. And all of these scholarships are one-year contracts. All right, they're not gonna be a four-year scholarship. So that means at the end of the year, that scholarship can be taken away. So if a kid goes to school and they do not do well on their grades, that they do not do well in the pool, they uh, mess around. You know what? It is going to be kind of, it is gonna be taken away from them. Now, on the flip side. If a kid goes to school and they do great on their grades and they do even better and they and they have that chip on their shoulder and they push and they really help out the team. That is gonna be an opportunity to get more athletic money. So many times, kids from Texas are gonna go to a school. And they have to pay X the first year, and yeah, and then the secondary, it's X plus um. A thousand dollars or X plus uh, ten thousand dollars. So every year, the like, the goal should be to try to get more and more money each and every year. A lot of times, like the coaches, they might have a half a scholarship kind of left over after the recruiting cycle. They might take that and split it up of like. A- a- amongst the uh, a- a- amongst the seniors that are still there. So, there are a ton, but again, it's going to be a package. No one's going to be on a full athletic ride. All right, so again, that's what the coach can do. They can help you get into school. They can, they can, they can help you with the, like, the financial aid. And then, then, then they could help you with the various scholarships on campus as well. Then, of course, they can help with athletic money if they have athletic money, yeah, to get, so. Any questions as far as, I think, I think there's, I think I saw a question in the chat.
Yeah, the next chat question was, let's say a school will bring in six freshmen each year. How wide of a net do they cast for this? And how common is it for the coach to tell you he's recruiting you, but then he drops you for another kid near the end of the process?
I know, I'm just going to speak off of experience. I mean, to get my, yeah, my first recruiting class, I had ten incoming freshmen my first year, okay? Again, to, for those that missed it kind of earlier, I had one kid that played high school water pole on my first year of NCAA water pole coaching. I had to learn that I needed to get a lot of kids in and, and a lot of kids in fast. So, um, and I probably talked to probably a hundred and fifty, yeah, to two hundred kids, yeah, to get down to that ten. So, um, it's going to be a wide net. And it's not just the coach doing it, it's also going to be there, like, uh, like, assistant coaches. It, and it's even wider net now, because back then, there wasn't the internet, there wasn't as much email, there wasn't as much opportunities to get information o- o- online at the various websites. So, um, every school's going to be different on, on kind of how they do their processes. Even schools, you know, within the same conference are going to be different. You know, Harvard is going to be different than Brown, obviously, okay? So, the coaches are going to, are like, like, their rules, you know, within their own admission departments are going to be different for everybody. So, um, as far as a coach, that's going to string you along and then drop you at the last second, that's also kind of getting to, yeah, yeah, to know the coach. Because if a coach isn't really talking to you kind of a- along the way, you have to know that that in the back of your head, that may be an option ki- kind of down the line. But I'm going to go back to the A, B, C, and D thing. Again, if you're, i- like, if you're going to a CD school, the coach may not want to, the coach may not talk to you as often as if you're going to an AB school. Okay, so, you're going to be more likely, if it's going to be a CD school where you may not play to your junior, senior year, that you might be the expendable kid at, yeah, that might get cut there at, yeah, at the end. If you go to an AB school, the likelihood of that happening is, yeah, is much, much lower. And the coach is also going to be a lot more proactive and, uh, and, yeah, and probably be willing to talk to you a lot more as you go through the admissions process. Did I answer the question? I hope so. So, if not, please ask again. Again, you know, I've, like, I tell, I, I've, I've kind of mentioned it here, uh, before. You have to be, yeah, you have to be proactive. You have to get started as soon as possible, ki- kind of get that resume, kind of, kind of get the top, uh, kind of ten and ten to fifteen schools. And understand, you are selling yourself out there. You are selling yourself to the coaches out there. There are not going to be a ton of coaches that are going to come to Texas to watch athletes, uh, uh, like, to watch athletes, uh, play. So, you can send them videos, but, you know, you have to go out there. You have to make that personal connection with the coach. Otherwise, you may not have as many opportunities. So again, email, call. If you like, if you're, uh, like, if you're an upcoming senior, email call every week. Until, unlike, until you hear back again, you're not bothering the coach. Okay, y- you are doing their job for them. And if you are bothering the coach, then you may not want to go to that school. And, yeah, and take them off your list. Now, um, if you are a, like, a, a junior, I would suggest that you call and email every other week or twice a month, you know, until you start ki- kind of hearing back. If you are a sophomore, I, I would say call a- and, uh, an email, oh, once a month, until you start hearing back. You know, so, but beep, but, uh, be proactive and it's never too early to get started. Again, you know, I think I mentioned this, we are not like the other sports. These coaches have a lot that is going on. They are, they are coaching college. They have their own families, like, like, kind of out there. They might be busy during, like, the fall men's season and busy again during the entire, uh, spring women's season. Then they all, and then they might also coach a water pole club kind of during the summer. And they have no assistant coaches. So, you have to understand that they will get to you. They, yeah, like, they, they will definitely kind of get to you. But whenever you are contacting these coaches, be prepared to answer their questions. All right, and what I mean by that is, they're going to ask you kind of how often you play. Like, you need to make sure that you know all the information that's on your resume. They're going to ask you some about, so what type of offense does your team play, kind of what type of defense, so, so what positions? So be prepared kind of mentally to answer questions. But also have questions ready to ask the coaches. All right, for example, what position, so do you think I'm going to play on your team? Because you might be a center defender on your club team, dip, but, yeah, but you might be an attacker on your high school team. And then in college, you might be a center player, all right? What is your game plan? What type of coach are you? Are you a yeller or screamer? Do you, yeah, ki- kind of, kind of, do you sit in a circle and hold hands and sing kumbaya? It's get to know the coaches, but just don't ask about the water pole aspect, but also ask about the academics. How's good is, like, how good is the physics department? What percentage of the players on the team are also in, yeah, are also, uh, that also have physics as a major? What is the typical class size? You know, ki- kind of what is the typical day for a student athlete? Ask about the financial aid. We talked about the, uh, like, uh, uh, about the financial aid and the scholarships. Ask about that. If you don't ask, they're not that, like, if you don't let them know, listen, I love your school and I want to go to school there, but I can only afford ten thousand dollars a year, the coach doesn't know that unless you tell them. So don't be afraid to tell them, all right, and ask for the money. Ask for the sale, all right? You have, yeah, like, like, yeah, like, you have to ask. Because you don't want to sit there and get strung along, and then at the end, well, I'm sorry, but I can only, like, it's going to be thirty thousand dollars a year to go to school here, when if you told them too much prior that, that, that you can only afford ten thousand dollars, then it's going to be one of those things where that's going to be on the athlete and parent. You need to be proactive there, and that's a big part where the parents can step in and start talking, yeah, kind of, kind of directly. Yeah, the coach, because the kid may not know. So, um, a lot of times, you know, ki- kind of people ask me, what are college coaches looking for? All right, again, they're looking for good grades, a good SAT score. They are, they are, like, they're looking for people that are, are taking the challenging courses. You know, the maturity, the self-awareness, the, that, like, they want people that are going to be au- au- like, authentic. Enthusiasm about the school that, that, yeah, that they're looking into, also about their sport, about their coaches, you know? And they're also looking for leaders and, um, uh, diversity as well. So, you know, if you are a minority, there's going to be all, there, I'd like, there might be more opportunities kind of out there than the people that, that are not minorities. Like, if you are a leader, a captain on your team, that's going to allow a ton of opportunities ki- ki- kind of out there. You know, they're also looking for the motivated athlete. You know, the kid that has a ton of experience, that has played a ton of games, you know, and of course, the intangibles. You know, the toughness, the heart, the competitive grit, you know, are they coachable? They're, they're, like, the coaches in college are going to talk to your local high school coach, your local club coach, and they're going to ask about these intangible type things, all right? And then a big thing is, you have to show that you have a genuine interest in being part of that school and that coach's water pole program. Can't, those things cannot be faked, all right? I also, I also tell kids, you know, kind of make sure that, you know, you watch your social media right now. Okay, whenever you're being recruited, coaches are going to look at your, at your social media, you know? And if you have a, if you're saying one thing to them, but then you're doing the opposite on your, uh, on your social media, oh, I skipped out of practice today. That's a reason for them to take you off the list. Okay, so, watch your social media. Go back and clean your social media, okay? And be, uh, and use caution on your social media, because people will be looking at that. People will be looking at that. Okay, um, but, yeah, the last thing is, I tell everybody, prepare to play in college. And what I mean by that is, play as much as you possibly can. Play as much as you possibly can. Train at, at, like, play in high school, play in club, go to ODP, go to JOs. Get, yeah, and, yeah, and get seen. Go and seek out the best opportunity, yeah, to get stronger, even if you need to get like a personal trainer, or, um, or you get some personalized, uh, kind of, kind of one-on-one coaching. Cross train, do swimming. A lot of, like, a, a, a lot of water pole, uh, players go, I don't want to swim. Swimming is the best cross training in the world for water pole. Don't be afraid of swimming. Plus, if you're on your high school swimming, that's a great opportunity, yeah, to be with your friends and, uh, and to compete in another high school sport. So definitely swim, all right? If, like, if possible, attend college, um, like, uh, college camps on their campuses, all right? And once you get in, that doesn't mean it's over. You got to get ready and play up until the point that you are at school. Okay, so I know a kid, this was about ten years ago. He, he was a kid from North Texas and he got done, um, his team won the state championship. And then he didn't play at all that summer after his, his, uh, senior year. And then he went off to school and I saw him at Christmas break. I go, so, so, um, kind of how'd it go? And he goes, well, I, I didn't get to play as much as I thought. I go, how much, how much kind of did you play this past summer? I go, you didn't play a lot. I go, we talked about that. He goes, yep, that's exactly what my college coach said. The kid did work hard and played as much as you could from that point forward. But, you know, if you don't play and give yourself the best opportunity to, uh, play and practice and compete as a freshman, it's good, it's just going to be an uphill battle kind of once you're there. Okay, um, there are, there is some information on that, on those links about NCAA eligibility center. Every athlete's going to have to, to definitely get their, um, NCAA eligibility. That's everybody, all athletes have to fill out the information, pay a small fee to the NCAA. I, I, I would definitely recommend that, that, that you do that as quickly as you can. And eventually, you'll get to the point wherever you have your five, six schools, and then you can take the unofficial visits and the official visits to go see. I highly recommend that you definitely take your opportunity to go see the schools. And what I mean by that is, the un- like, like, unofficial visits are, you can take as many of these as you want. You go and, like, you're at JOs and you stay for a couple e- extra days afterwards and you visit a, a couple colleges in Northern California or Southern California. You can even contact the coach. The coach can show you around and then you can meet them. You can do as many of those as you can. I would suggest you do the, like, like, the, like, the, like, the junior day visits. These are going to be completely financed by, like, the athlete and their parents, the unofficial visits. All right, that, that is going to be, go there for a couple hours or a half a day and kind of see what the school's like. Again, you can take as many of those as you want. Now, you only get five official visits. And Ally, please tell me if I'm giving some wrong ki- ki- kind of info here. Not, and not all schools are going to offer the, offer the, uh, official visits. These are going to be kind of financed part or whole by the school. For water pole, most athletes are going to have to pay for their flight ticket out to the school. It's going to be for a forty-eight hour period where the athlete can stay, uh, with an, we have, like, with a current player on the team and see what the schools like, see what the classes are like, and see what practices are like, see what the social life is like. And I highly recommend, once you get down to that point, you take your official visits and take those five official visits to go see those schools. You might have to play, like, you might have to pay for your plane ticket, but more often not, it's going to be a great opportunity to kind, yeah, it's like, to see those schools. But, uh, you know, and I would, if you're on those, uh, uh, either official or the, or the unofficial visits, be on your best behavior. Because they are, you are not only seeing if you like them, but they're seeing if the coach likes you or the team likes you. And that's a big, big part of this process, is you are finding what is going to fit for you. So, that's pretty much my talk as far as the college. I kind of, uh, ran through a ton of information. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, before we go, do we have any more questions in the, uh, in the chat?
Uh, this is a follow-up from Lisa's last question about, like, how wide of a net a coach would cast. And if a coach would recruit you and then drop you near the end of the process. So she said, how many kids would you bring to your school for a visit of, say, like, ten spots?
Or us, like, a singular visit, they might, I mean, again, the coaches are starting with the big net and then they're going to get down and they're, and they may only get a few kids that want to come to their, um, schools for, in a quote-unquote, official visit. I don't know that, uh, like, uh, again, I don't know the specifics for each school, but, um, I know, you know, kind of, kind of whenever I was recruiting, I had a ton of kids come to visit. Like, if there were, if I ended up with ten kids that, uh, the, yeah, that came, I probably had at least thirty to forty kids that, the, uh, that, uh, that visited. There were even a couple of the kids that came that, 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 uh, that never visited. So, it's one of those things where if a kid wants to go on a trip, the coach is probably going to try to make it happen. So, you might have ten, uh, like, you know, ki- ki- kind of ten boys and ten girls on a recruiting trip weekend in the fall. You know, and that's, and that's their primary weekend. You know, kids might, uh, they might not be able to make that because that's their, that's the weekend of their prom or their state championship or their graduation or, yeah, or something. So, they can always call the coach, go, I can't come this weekend, so ki- can I come out a different weekend? I would highly recommend, if you can, trying to go to one of those huge recruiting weekends, try to do it with only two or three different kind of recruits there, because it's a little bit more of, of a personal scene. But, uh, I don't really know the ratio as far as the specific numbers are concerned, because that can be different for every school, so. Any other questions, guys? Hopefully, I answered most of the, of, like, of your questions along the way. Again, this is going to be posted at the TX Water Pole website, um, under the Town Hall Meetings. Again, at, if you go up to the top of the chat, there are a ton of links, as far as the college packet, the path to college, a sample college, uh, resume, and also the link to the USA Water Pole page where they have all the four-year schools that are listed. The coach, their name, the, and their address and their school, so, they'd like the email address and their school. Any questions? Well, I hope this was informative. Um, and then next week for our, for our Town Hall meeting, we are going to have Scott Slay on and we're going to talk about the UAL Fall 2021. So it's going to be a lot of fun. So, again, my, yeah, just my email, I will put it here in the chat, is jolunhan@usawaterpole.org. If you have any specific questions, please feel free to reach out directly and I will answer any and all questions, so. All right, thanks, everybody. I do appreciate it.